At this time, we will call the May 19, 2023 meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission into order. Anyone wish to give testimony before this board today, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, say I do. Thank you. We need to approve the April 21st, 2023 minutes. Tom, I did notice an error in the minutes. If we could just make it part of the record on the motion I had made as pertaining to lot sizes. It says A1 district leave is recommended. That was not what was, what I proposed. I proposed to change it, to leave it as it was currently.
Leave it as it was currently.
As it was currently.
That's correct.
And the minutes say as recommended, which...
Yeah, that you chose to leave the single-family portion as it was currently.
That's...
So we'll correct that in the minutes. And you also, I asked you about two family dwellings, and you said leave it as recommended, which was 120,000 square feet.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to get that in the record.
Just leave all of the minutes. Just a quick question. Do you think, Tom, that we did our due diligence here?
Yes, sir. I mean, y'all reviewed it, or it came before you. You deferred it, you had a workshop, and then you came back and did it again.
It took a long time, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
And then I just noticed, County Commission being there, was at least seven made the commission, so they were confused.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So get that in the record. Okay. With the amendment, with the area I pointed out, I will take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve and correct.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, move aye. Those opposed, minutes carried. Tom, we can move straight into old business?
Yes, sir. We have a rezoning request that was deferred from the April 21st, 2023 County Planning Commission. Application has been submitted by Joe Haddix on behalf of property owner Susan Gibson, requesting to have property rezoned from A1 agricultural to R1 rural residential. The property is located at 724 Bradshaw Road and contains approximately 17.78 acres. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 26, parcel 67.01. The Wilson County Land Use Plan calls for low-density residential development in this general area. R1 Rural Residential District fits this description. The difference in number of lots realized on this property, if other lot with them bulk requirements can be, that can be met, is a consideration when evaluating the difference in current A1 zoning and what is being proposed within the R1 Rural Residential District. Now, since last month when this was deferred, you need to listen to this part carefully. It's general language that we usually cover on residential rezonings, but it has changed as a result of County Commission action, or it will have changed by tomorrow, on any development plans that are submitted on the property. The current A1 zoning could allow as many as nine lots by calculation. I believe that was closer to 18 at last, it was 19 at last month's agenda, but because of the change in zoning, the current A1 zoning could allow as many as nine lots on this property. At present, the R1 Rural Residential would allow as many as 19 lots, which is roughly equivalent to what A1 would have allowed last month. There are site-specific limitations inclusive of, but not limited to regulatory floodplain, unlimited capacity of availability of soils to service any development, et cetera, that might affect these densities if or when development occurs on the property, regardless of what the zoning classification is, and that goes for this month or last month. Staff will note that this development does have road frontage on Bradshaw Road. Wilson County Road Commission and the County Regional Planning Commission will require some road improvements to Bradshaw Road at the time of actual subdivision development, regardless of what the traffic study findings are, and regardless of whether a major subdivision on this property is zoned. Staff has made this rezoning request available to executive representatives of the school system. Staff's had no feedback on this particular rezoning from the schools or other representatives regarding this request, though there has been some concern mentioned by a school board member about previous higher-density development in the general northern portions of the county. Staff has also made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services and has been given no feedback. The proposed rezoning is within WEMA Station 6 and Highway 109 north's five-mile, that station's five-mile ISO response zone for fire emergency services. A representative from WEMA is here today if you wish to speak to them about any fire service-related infrastructure questions. The County Stormwater Department has requested that the applicant, planning commission, and other interested parties be notified that the presence of sinkholes, caves, wetlands, and streams, and land areas that are extremely flat, marshy, or steep may affect development of this tract and the total number of lots realized. As an additional point of information, this rezoning does appear to be near the Wright-Ginnings Century Farm, which is located on, it's not that close, this is from a, I think that's from a different case, because that's on 231 North. No, no, that's right. I'm sorry, I read that wrong. It's near the Wright-Ginnings Century Farm located at 231 Northwest Williams Road and the Bates Century Farm located at 308 and 325 Academy Road, based on information provided to the Wilson County Planning Department. With the above statements, staff can recommend approval of the rezoning request to R1 Rural Residential zoning, because it does fit with the land use plan criteria.
And maximized out at R1 under the new criteria, this would allow how many lots, Tom?
19 lots.
19 lots, yes.
Yeah, and just so you're aware, this is the border at present on our zoning map between A1 and R1 zoning. So in other words, this is A1, and I believe everything from this subdivision southward in that immediate vicinity is R1.
Okay. Thank you.
The R1 prior to the zone density changes.
Okay. Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I was here last month and voiced my...
If you would state your name.
Oh, I'm Betty Johnstone, and I live at 722 Heritage Road. My property backs up to that farmland right there. When I moved here in 2014, I bought a property that was backed up to farmland. That was my indigent, and that's where I'd like to stay. I don't want to see it developed. I don't want homes built on it. I already have a water problem with runoff from that area. That property slopes back to my backyard, and this is what happens when it rains really hard. Got lots of pictures here. My yard becomes like a river, okay? If you put a bunch of homes on that property, I don't know if it's 19 or nine, I don't care how many you put back there, it's going to cause more water to run off onto my property. It's got nowhere to go. There's a little ditch that runs through my backyard that fills up with water, and it's just going to run into my crawl space once y'all, if it gets developed. So I just want to say I don't want the property developed, I don't want the zoning changed. I want it to stay as farmland, because that's why I bought that property, was because it backed up to farmland, and I think the other people in my community feel the same way. They don't want to see it developed. I'm really alarmed at the amount of development I've seen going on since I moved to Wilson County. It's just been just one subdivision after another, and I'd like to see you slow down a little bit and say no and leave some farmland that makes it available to animals and for people to enjoy the green space. So I'd like for you to vote no to have this rezoned, so, and I appreciate your time. If you'd like to see my pictures, I have them here.
If you want to circulate them around.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir?
I didn't sign in, and I didn't swear in, so I didn't swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
You would like to sign in.
My name is Thomas Maynard. I live at 654 Bradshaw, which, Mr. Pershear, that would be the first lot right there north of this.
Right here, right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've spoken with my neighbor who lives in the corner, the curve right there, so we are sandwiched between those, that property is sandwiched between our property. Across the street from Bradshaw Road, there's a farm that has a drainage that runs, as that farm holds water, it runs onto that property. It doesn't have to rain very much, but I've talked to the commission, McFarland, who, that is in his, this property is in his district, his area, and that water will rain, it'll run to that property, and it'll sit on that property. We don't have rain for a week, that property holds water. I echo my neighbor that we have water issues, and if you go around Bradshaw Road back down to Academy, there is a creek, wetlands that runs right through there. If you've been here in Wilson County long enough, that area used to all be underwater. Houses were built there. The water just keeps getting pushed different ways and different directions. The water that sits on that property sits there all the time. I know that, I think, Eastland Constructions, who Miss Gibson's choose to sell the property, my neighbor and I asked Miss Gibson before she put the property for sale if we could purchase it, not because we're anti-development, not because we don't want more houses, but there is a water problem. The water's going to run into Heritage Highlands, the water's going to run into those homes, and I just, I echo my neighbor, vote no on this. There's plenty of other land that can be developed. This is going to hold water, this is going to be a problem, this is going to be an issue for not just the development that goes on that 18 acres, but for Heritage Highlands, for my property, for the farm across the street. I just think it's something that, there's a better piece of land, there's a different area that these homes could go into. The speed limit on Bradshaw Road, I think, is about 35 miles an hour, and people go about 60. There's a motorcycle that runs up our road on Saturdays and Sundays, and I think he tries to see how fast it could go. If we put more homes in there, you're going to have children on Bradshaw Road. I know that there was a recommendation that the roads would need to be fixed, or built up, or improved. There's not a shoulder, accident on Bradshaw Road, there's already enough houses out there. Heritage Highlands, I'm sure, loves their cul-de-sac there at the end that backs up to that, and they don't want that developed either. So I would ask that you all vote no against this development.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Brian McFarland. I live at 732 Heritage Road, so if you look on the map, I am the last parcel there on the left-hand side that backs up to this property. I've lived there for almost, yes, sir, that one right there. So I've lived there for almost 12 years now, and I have seen what Miss Johnstone said and what Mr. Maynard has said over the years. If you look down at the bottom side of this map, you can actually see where the creek travels back in behind these homes on the bottom right-hand side right here. Keep going, keep going down, bottom right-hand corner, keep going down, right there. That creek runs in behind all of those homes and then back out, and then back out from my property where Lena Way is right there, where it kind of cul-de-sacs one parcel over from my parcel. Again, they've mentioned everything about all the flooding, so I'm not going to go into that any further. Mr. Maynard touched on it, on traffic issues. Regardless if they put an entrance or an exitway there on Bradshaw, they're not going to go there. They're going to come through Betty Boulevard and come down Heritage and cut through the cul-de-sac right next door to me, and I don't want all that. We're seeing a lot of smaller kids move into our neighborhood. My kids are now grown. They're 17 to 15, so they don't do a lot of riding around and walking around anymore. But I'm seeing a lot of younger kids and younger families moving in, and they don't have sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have that luxury. So we don't need some kids running through these neighborhoods at, you know, 40, 50, 60 miles an hour like I've seen them run through Heritage Road, unfortunately. Well, I've tried to stop them, but you can't stop it all the time. So I would also, you know, echo the sentiment, please vote no on this. I'm also with Mr. Johnstone. We moved there because of the property. I like having, waking up in the middle of the night, hearing nothing but just crickets, not hearing anything else. And I'm only a mile away from 109, but believe it or not, very rarely do we hear any traffic. So again, I just ask you to vote no on this, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this?
I will make, I will give you a reminder of something that came up at last month's agenda, when this was on the agenda for roughly twice the density permissions as we're talking about now. This is, this does fall in the periphery of the Spencer Creek watershed. Just so you're aware, again, this watershed is contracted under study with the Corps of Engineers for additional stream data to be collected and additional recommendations about dealing with drainage within the Spencer Creek watershed. That timeline on that is roughly, I believe they said late 2024, early 2025, if I recall correctly, for the Corps to complete that study, but it does fall within that study area, just for what it's worth. And I want to respond to some of the comments where the people keep talking about the development. We do not have a development proposal at present, so when we get a development proposal, we will be reviewing it for drainage and other infrastructure considerations, but what you have right now is a zoning entitlement request. Now, the planning commission and the county commission certainly can do with that what they will as to whether or not they feel like there should be additional lots permitted here through an R1 rezoning, but at present, it's entitled to roughly nine lots of estimated of use under its current A1 zoning. Last month, before the county commission, their wisdom, chose to make an adjustment, largely in response to some of what we've heard today about growth, trying to maybe tamper it a little bit, they've roughly doubled the densities in the county in most of the residential zone districts, or not doubled, halved the densities in most of the residential districts. So I think that the county commission and frankly, this planning commission, even though the county commission chose to go a different route, have heard the concerns of the community and are trying to address some of those concerns. But that being said, we did not initiate the rezoning request, a private individual that owns the land did. We're left, this board is left with trying to consider whether or not that request for additional density is justifiable, I suppose. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Haddix? You've got up twice, sir, so give you your opportunity.
Good morning. Joe Haddix, CSTG. Appreciate staff's recommendation for approval as this rezon, it would follow land use guidance. You know, it seems monthly on here, we're talking about drainage, how we appreciate the adjacent property owners coming out. I mean, obviously, we can see the existing drain coming through behind the existing homes onto our property, the little drain coming through our property, so we feel that we can, with a final development plan, obviously, make the drainage better and go in and solve some problems that may be existing currently. And, you know, traffic for, you know, a maximum of 19 homes, I don't, you're not going to see a whole lot of additional traffic generated. But really, just respectfully request your approval and positive recommendation to the county commission on this rezon. Can answer any questions y'all may have.
I will also point out one other thing. If this, regardless of whether this gets rezoned or not, the number of lots that are realizable on this acreage is not enough for the, according to our zoning thresholds, to qualify for a cluster provision development. So they are, in A1 zoning, they're physically going to have to lay out two-acre tracts. In R1 zoning, as approved, they're going to have to physically lay out one-acre tracts, or 40,000 square foot tracts and 80,000 square foot tracts, vice versa. So just shy of an acre, just shy of two acres, depending on which zone district it only lands on, if they were to develop it, they're going to have to lay those larger threshold acreages out. They can't cluster it into smaller lots to get around creeks and drainageways and things. So that may ultimately also affect the total number of lots ever realized on the property, should it get developed, because they're still going to have to work around the drainage with regard to our drainage review and everything.
Mr. Chairman, got a couple of questions. Let me finish with the public, please, on this one. Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? Okay. We'll close the public comment session at this time. Mr. Rempro?
Joe, a couple of questions for you. Is it local sewer that's adjacent to this property that these homes have, or are you talking about septic system, step, et cetera?
Step. It would connect to the existing step in there.
Would be resident on the property? The step treatment facility?
There's a regional facility just off the map here to the west.
You can kind of see the berm, I guess, right there.
I got you. So it exists already, and you were tied to that?
Yes, sir.
And they have capacity?
They have some additional capacity. We've got some soils there on site.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Comments?
Yes, sir.
People tend to think that the planning commission, when I got involved, had magic. You know, I don't know anything about magic or being able to develop. The key thing here was saying, I heard from the people that are opposed, and I'm pro-committee of the community, is stop the development. I couldn't do that anymore, this board couldn't do that anymore than telling you what you could sell your property. You can only sell it for this, you can only sell for that, because the owner of this property, as at A1, with the ordinance as they are, can put nine lots on it if we don't do anything.
They're up to nine lots, just depending on...
Depending on the development, drainage, et cetera. So there's no authority there really to say stop the development unless it just gets way out of hand and Tom finds a lot of problems and things, which you've already pointed out. So those will be considered when they present a plat for that. So there's no yes and no for the development, it's more of a density question. Do you allow more or less with this request? That's what that is, just for clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other questions from our board? Okay, I'll call for a motion. A move we disapprove of. We have a motion to deny, but Mr. Rempro, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Nichols.
Please state your reasons for denial, in case...
Our reason for denial is a concern about drainage, property drainage, and road access, et cetera.
We have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I'm sorry, do you have, no. And all those against, please raise your right hand. We have five yeses and three nos, if I'm not mistaken.
Motion fails to receive a majority.
It does not seem a majority, and we'll proceed to the county commission with no recommendation from this body.
You've got to have six votes.
There's nine of you.
I'm sorry?
There's nine of you.
So who didn't vote?
Well, the motion is to deny. It fails. Now, if you're going to send it up with a recommendation, let that go. But...
So was it five to three, or six to three?
It was three to six.
If you voted against this, please raise your right hand again.
How about against?
Oh, I'm sorry, voted for the motion, I apologize.
For the motion.
We had one, two, three, so it would be six to three.
No.
We're going to make that up, because it wasn't one to nine.
Three votes go slow here. What was motion? The motion is to deny. That's correct. If you were to vote to deny, raise your hand. No, sir, we didn't. Mr. Thompson, Mr. Rempro, and Ms. Nichols. With the rest of the board voting no.
That's pleasant, I would take six for carrying any motion.
I understand. Okay. So I will call for another motion.
Good question, we're going to discuss.
I would call for another motion.
Motion to approve based on staff recommendations.
Motion to approve based on staff recommendations by Ms. Weathers. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Turner. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three. We have four, four, and those opposed, raise your right hand. Five against.
It fails.
That motion fails on second.
So won't we just send it on up to the county commission with no recommendation?
That's why it got deferred last month.
I'm making a motion to send it to county commission with no recommendation.
Second, third. Do we even have to vote on that one?
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay. We have a motion to motion to ask to forward to the county commission with no recommendation. We have a second by Mr. Rempro. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. One, two, three. And that vote will be unanimous. Tom, I guess we're ready for new business now.
The next item on the agenda is a rezoning of property. The applicant, Shelley Cole, on behalf of JAMS, JAMS Investments, is seeking to rezone property from C3 highway commercial zoning to C2 general commercial. This is an approximately three-acre tract of property with a longstanding commercial business. It had an antique store on it that was a longstanding use on a field prior to being rezoned not too long ago, not too long ago, and a commercial structure on the property that's currently being used as a, I can't remember if it's an insurance or real estate office, but it's an office use. The property is referenced on Wilson County Property Map 33, parcel 45. There was a submitted boundary survey to split the property into two commercial tracts in the original request in June of 2021, where the property was zone C3 highway commercial. The 1.78 acre tract, or property at the northernmost portion of the original tract, which includes the old antique store structure, is proposed to be rezoned to C2 general commercial. So it's this portion where this building is that they're looking to get rezoned from C3 to C2. Wilson County Growth Plan, or the Wilson County Land Use Plan, calls for high-intensity commercial development in this location, and C2 general commercial zoning is considered a high-intensity commercial zone district by county zoning regulations. There is some direction for neighborhood-level commercial development, which would typically be represented by C1 neighborhood commercial zoning designation or limited office commercial zoning, LOC. However, parcels on the other two non-governmental tracts, which is just to the north here, it's BJ's Trailers, and one over here, this one being the WEMA station, have already been zoned C3 highway commercial, which is a higher-intensity zone district as well. Subsequently, this property has been zoned C3 highway commercial since there was a precedent set there for that intensity of zoning. So there's definitely a precedent for our intensity commercial development at this corner intersection. The County Land Use Plan anticipates increased levels of growth in the north-central portion of the county to either side of 109 due to relatively adequate levels of infrastructure, as well as market demand when compared to other areas in the county that are less suited for development due to geography, infrastructure, and market demand. Staff views the C1 district as a light-intensity zone district that would have permitted generally approximately 400, permitted commercial development according to the land use plan within 400 feet of the intersection under the busy corner provision. That's generally defined as the front road being Highway 109 having approximately 10,000 cars a day or better, I think it's between 27,000 and 30,000 cars per day at present that pass down 109, and approaching 3,000 cars a day on the intersecting road. The C3 highway commercial zoning was approved to potentially bring goods and services to a part of the county that is currently lacking such commercial provision with the expansion of Highway 109 north. We do not have direct land use direction in this portion of the county for C2 general commercial with the existing C3 zoning already active on the property. Staff can see a precedent to rezone to a different district, but with no direct land use direction, staff cannot recommend approval. This board, planning commission, can consider the precedents that have been set, though. Staff has made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services and has been given no feedback on this specific rezoning. Again, a member of WEMA is here, should you have any questions for them. Staff will note that the proposed rezoning falls within the limits of Laguardia WEMA Station's five-mile ISO response zone, in fact, it's right across the street the fire station is. The county engineers requested that the applicant, planning commission, and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, or wetlands, streams, and other land that is extremely flat, marshy, or steep could affect the development of this tract and total number of lots realized through subdivision development or commercial development. As an additional point of information, the rezoning does appear to be in close immediate proximity to at least two century farms known as the Graves Wright Farm and the Burton Farm, based on information provided to the County Planning Department.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Shelley Cole. I'm one of the property owners there at the 5760 Highway 109. Our main reason for asking for this to be rezoned is just to allow us a really more positive impact of what we can place in that, in that area. It would allow us to put a medical clinic and some retail use for general uses there, and just, it would be a much larger opportunity for us, and we've not received any opposition personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Tom, the biggest difference in C2 and 3 is what, simply what's allowed?
Yes, there's more allowance. Hold on a second, I can tell you.
And some of this...
And some of this, some of the uses I'm about to outline would be limited obviously by scale. This is a smaller lot that's being asked for rezoning. But C2 allows antique stores, armories, assembly halls, auction halls, auto sales, bike and, bike service and repair shops, billboards, boat sales, bowling alleys, broadcast stations, carpet rug, linoleum or floor covering sales, car washes, churches, clinic and medical services, dog kennels, farming, farm implement sales, firework stands, furniture and appliance stores, gas stations, grocery stores, hardware stores, hotels, landscaping and garden centers, including greenhouses and nurseries, manufacturing incidental to retail, as long as there's a retail use there, they can have a manufacturing use associated with it that takes up number 135% of structure area, motels, museums, music shops, office equipment, supply shops, paint or wall covering sales, parking lots, recording studios, restaurants, retail businesses which provide a wide range of goods and services, roadside stands, schools, service stations, providing fuel and repair service for auto and trucks and skating rinks, taverns, establishments selling beer for consumption on premises is what tavern in parentheses means. Theater indoor and outdoor, except that in outdoor theater, the screen of such shall be so erected or located that its face or that side upon which the most picture images projected should not be visible from any state or local highway. Again, that's probably one that's likely not going to go here. Undertaking service, utility under governmental use, veterinary clinic, any use permitted in the C1 district. And then it has a long list of uses permissible on appeal as well.
Okay. And your primary concern here is just the land use direction you have?
Yeah, that's the primary reason we did not recommend approval.
You have no other objections?
No, I mean, the precedent's been set here.
Thank you, sir.
Across, across 109, it's C3, ready?
I believe so. And then BJ's Trailer Sales to the north, which also started out as a Uson field, was ultimately zoned C3.
Tom, do you care to laser that again? Where's BJ's?
BJ's Trailer Sales just off the map here on the west side of 109. East side of 109, this is the Legardo Fire Station and down to this vicinity is, is C3 zoning as well. And this was most recently, this parcel was zoned C3, correct? Yeah, June of 21, that, that parcel was zoned C3.
That tracks.
Mr. Chairman, there's a hodgepodge of diversion in there. And, and that, that district there is not been served well economically. This might be a good thing for that corner and that intersection. We've got a fire all right across there and that property is dominated.
And again, this building has already been put into use, I believe, as a insurance agency. Yeah.
So the bottom half is C3 and the top half is?
It's all C3. No, that, I'm sorry, the, this part is LOC right now. No. The bottom part's LOC, this part's C3. The part they want to rezone is currently C3. The insurance office portion is LOC.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case? Do we have any further questions from our board? Mr. Tom?
Yes.
This is, does it flow with your land use? What kind of problem would we create if this didn't get approved for land use?
Given the precedent's already been set, I, I think your problem is fairly small, miniscule.
And you've heard nothing from?
You've already zoned this property in part outside of land use plan. C3 is outside of land use plan. So changing it from C3 to C2, it's still outside of land use plan.
Understood. And you've heard no opposition from any of the century farms or any residents?
No, sir.
Anyone?
Not on, not on this particular one.
Any other questions from our board?
This is in Spencer Creek Watershed for what it's worth.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve of the question.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Turner. Second by Mr. Ash. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, the motion will be carried forward to the county commission. I assume that the June meeting?
Yes. Both of the rezonings we've heard thus far, I anticipate going to the June meeting just in part.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. We are now ready for site plans?
Yes. The first site plan I have is the Mending Fences Cowboy Church, consisting of one lot at 10-471 Highway 109 North. References map 10, parcel 28. The site plan meets planning requirements. However, WEMA is requesting an referral of this item to submit for a state fire marshal plans review under Tennessee Code annotated 62-2-102. I found out about this late yesterday afternoon and Mr. Cowan from WEMA can address this. There will be one other church use on the agenda that this will come up on as well.
Mr. Cowan? Is this already in place, Tom?
Yes, sir, that, well, partially. They're, they're meeting in what is traditionally referred to as Rebus Old Horse Barn.
Correct.
For a portion of it, it's larger property is being used for an agretainment type use that includes some camping and some other concessions and restaurants and things. They are leasing a portion of the property to the Cowboy Church within the horse barn facility. They were at the Board of Zoning Appeals yesterday and got a, the church use approved and also got a accessory building, a variance to be within four feet of that building with a little small outbuilding that they're hoping to place behind the, behind the building, behind the church, or behind the stable building.
Well, they didn't get a use on the field. I mean, they, they're.
They got the church use approved and they got a variance for the outbuilding to be within four feet instead of eight feet of the, the existing.
You don't know if they discussed how long their lease was for, do you?
No, but they did say that the variance for the four foot building separation would go away if the church use went away. In other words, the church cessated and didn't, no longer met there.
So what I'm looking at here, Tom, is this what they're considering a portable and addition to be added to that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is that accurate, sir? Can you tell us how big a addition you're talking about doing there?
For classrooms.
You're, you're going to add that much or is that already?
No, the 12 by 32 building is what they're adding for classrooms. That's, that's that, that building.
So it's existing?
It's there.
And it's sitting four feet from the building now?
It's sitting four feet from the building now and they got a variance for that yesterday at the Board of Zoning Appeals. So long as the church use is there.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Cowan.
Hey, for those who don't know, my name is Daniel Cowan. I'm a planning officer for Wilson County Emergency Management. I'm also a state licensed fire inspector. So first off, I want to apologize for not having this on you all's notes today. We'll take the, we'll take the blame for that over at WEMA. Don't, don't, don't put it on time then, I apologize. I want to explain the flow. We've sent this up to the state fire marshal's office, it's new. We don't have a lot of assemblies that come through. And any, any assembly needs to be submitted to the state fire marshal's office per the, the, the code that Tom read off. Also have a sheet that I downloaded that can be downloaded from the state fire marshal's office that explains when a plan submitted is required to the state fire marshal's office. So they'll do a review or a no review, but it has to be submitted by a licensed architect or an engineer. It has to be submitted through a portal through the Tennessee State Fire Marshal's Office. They can actually submit it as a no review request through there. I spoke to the fire marshal's office, the, the planning. I actually submitted those plans in and they said we, we don't accept it from the fire department. It has to be submitted by an engineer, that's how, that's how new it is to us. But we do know that any assembly that passes through, when I say assemblies, schools, churches, any sort of highlight hazard, a nursing home, a hospital, wedding venues. We haven't had any of that come through in a very long time and that has to be submitted to the state fire marshal's office. So we have the due diligence at WEMA when we intercept that, plan an agenda to submit it to the state fire marshal's office, so.
And this has to do with the fact that they're using it for classroom use?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be an assembly. It's an assembly, it's a church. I didn't know, we've never been informed that there's a church out there at all, as we knew it was a horse barn. So we've, we've never received any, any sort of plans through there. So when I got it reviewed and discussed it, called the state fire marshal's office, also talked to my inspector. So I spoke with two people from the state fire marshal's office, one in plans review and also the local, our local county inspector that's a marshal as well to make sure. So those, those have to go through just like a school would or a, or a hospital, nursing home.
Dan, does that mean that, that the church use itself has to be reviewed by them?
They'll, they'll do a review or a no review. If it's reviewed, then they'll, then they'll apply their, their code to it and go through their procedure and then it'll come back to the engineer architect and it has to be.
Okay, how long, how long does that take?
I didn't ask that question this morning. I asked that question, I, I was asked to find out, I could find out a timeframe and the state fire marshal said usually if they don't have a huge workload that it can.
But we're not telling them they can't have church in right now.
No, we're not telling them we can't have church. I'm just, when I, when I get the assembly presented to me, I have to do my due diligence, speak to the state fire marshal's office. Yes, it needs to be submitted through the portal, we need to take a look at it because that's their, that's the hat that they wear. So, and, and we have to do the due diligence as the county fire department to make sure that that's done, done the right way to protect us at WEMA and to protect the county, just to make sure we're doing it right. So it's a little bit of a speed bump, but.
Mr. Ash, I had a devil several of these over the years. That can be a 30 day process and that can be a year long process.
It can be a year on that firewall if you're in over.
It, it can be an overwhelming process.
For something that size, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that it would be. I, I have friends in the, in the plans review up at the state fire marshal's office, so I've checked on that for you, but.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You made a statement, you thought it was, the last you thought of it was a horse barn, but there's a venue on property because they have advertised, there's, I believe people stay there, there's camping, things there, there.
TB's everywhere.
I got a submittal, we got the submittal here and it had a diagram on it. I think.
So I'm asking, do they have fire protection, that sprinklers already on property that might tie into this building? We don't know and that's partially associated with the agricultural exemptions afforded them. They don't have to come through our process.
So it's ag, ag.
We look at the property card too. When we were doing our review in house at WEMA, there's three cards, looks like, two commercials and there's an agriculture on it, so.
So how did, how did this get the, your attention, our attention called? You're starting church involved, many, many word, everywhere all over.
So, so the flow usually when it's submitted to the plans?
They came in the right way, tried to apply for it and, and go through the process.
As soon as we intercept it, we go through the, we go through the list and.
You say this is a new process or has to be submitted up?
No, it's not new. No, that's a.
Well, that's new for the camp.
It's new for the county. WEMA got involved in our review probably effectively January of this year is when WEMA started running there and taking interest there. It's kind of the same way that Glendale's other reviews, now WEMA is a part of that new process. Well, that probably started around January of this year.
And in the interim, the county commission adopted the National Fire Protection Code and the commercial building codes. What size is this lot, Tom? It's over one.
It's 28.
Yeah.
You're talking about the whole tract?
Yeah.
It's 28 acres.
But I mean, the use for the church. Is that what they're asking, talk about the whole of that? It's, it's, it's effectively one side of the other of this little. It sits in the corner, south corner right here of the stable, old stable building.
So they use a part of the original building?
Yeah.
So I would say for the zoning board, I would say they did the.
The outbuilding is a separate addition, but they are meeting.
Your tenants.
Your tenants inside. Yeah, so they're make, the church use itself is occurring in the south side of the stables in the corner and they're asking for a, today, the site plan approval is for this little outbuilding.
That's already there. And currently being used. Okay, I understand. I'm sorry, if you want to finish.
That's, that's all.
I have a question. Does this mean that if WEMA, you come back, they would have to stop?
I don't know if they'd have to stop or not. They'll submit it through the state fire marshal's office and the state fire marshal's office takes, takes presence at that point.
And the question I, I think I've got, maybe, I don't know if it'll help or not, but would they be advised to contact the state fire marshal's office to come inspect their current church activity in the stable?
Yeah, if there's a church occurring there, yes.
The state fire marshal can then tell them what, if anything, they need with that.
And that's.
And then this, this building plan has to be submitted to them most certainly according to TCA is what you're saying.
According to TCA, state fire marshal's.
And then the state fire marshal can take a pass on it and, and document that and get.
It can even be submitted in as a no review.
Yeah.
If, if they use your current guideline, it's an uphill, it's an uphill pull for them. You're talking about something, they, they get in sidewalks, man, and law fire marshal officers.
Pretty gross.
Yeah. So I, you know, I just.
I'm not getting that one.
I mean, yeah, it gets, when, when they get, when they get pulled into this, it's.
So Tom, but who was prudent wise to defer to allow WEMA to do their due diligence and finish? Well, that's what he's requesting.
Well, I don't think that's, we have no idea how to defer that to. We have no idea if we're going to get a answer on this in 30 days or six months.
Right.
I'm telling you, that can be a overcoming process.
That's why I didn't want them to be hindered from continuing to hold their church services and do what they're doing until we get the proper information.
Well, what, the only thing that's before you today is not the church use that they're currently undertaking in the building. The only thing that's for you today is whether or not you're approving that outbuilding for the classroom. So I don't think we're telling them they can't meet, continue to meet. It's just whether or not they can use that.
Working for, so we're basically coming forward to what the zoning board approved yesterday and said they've given permission to do it.
They've given them permission to place that there, yes. And I don't want to confuse anyone when I have to, but Mike, is there any benefit to talking about the institutionalized person act and Tennessee Freedom Act and its impact on local zoning enforcement?
Probably not at this time, I think.
Okay.
It may depend on what they're, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, if we, if we could go ahead, few more topics to cover.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, is, have you seen this property, this little building?
I've seen it out there years ago, but I haven't, we, we don't, we don't police for anything, so we, we.
Commissioner Ash always brings up great points and I'm going to throw one of his out. Is that, is there more than a door? If there was a fire, two doors, two ingressing barriers for them to get out of this building, what kind of thing?
It's according to the size, then it'll, it'd be according to this, to this space.
Safety's our biggest concern, I think.
Portable classroom, don't need a safety. If it, if it was to come through us, one day Wilson County becomes an independent jurisdiction and we're breaking away from the state fire marshal's office and we do it in house. I would, I would look at things like that. I may ask them to have a safety plan. There's a tornado warning or something like that or there's a fire where to evacuate to. So, but right now we're, we're at their hands, so I'm just basically doing my due diligence to let you know what, the, the flow, what we have to do in our house, so.
Yes, sir. That is it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this today?
Yeah.
I'm Randy Gibson with Mending Fences Cowboy Church, with the 3791 Finger Street Road in Mount Julian. We're just a small church. We started meeting there about several years ago and we rented this space from Mr. Wilpon and he graciously allowed us to put this building outside, which is a 12 by 32 building. It will have exit signs, it does have two doors, it does have two smoke detectors and it's got windows in it that's big enough, if we have to break the window out or open the window to get children out, we can still get children out.
You think everything meets Egress as best you know?
As best as I know, yes.
And how long have y'all been meeting there, sir?
Several years.
Okay.
But the outbuilding is just something that we just thought we needed because Mr. Wilpon had run out of space for us to have a Sunday school class and we thought this would be the best way to do a Sunday school class since we really can't afford our own piece of property right now and do a building church.
I understand, I understand.
So Mr. Wilpon is the owner, sir?
Yes.
His property I need to understand, I know Mr. Wilpon and I will.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? We have any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Cool, let Mr. Ash finish, I'll be back.
I'll just clarify, all we're talking about is supporting what the zoning board did. They gave them the variance for the extension and now we're here.
That's correct.
I mean, how about the case that been out long ago, come to give, to give us sufficient permission, that. the permission, but I just, I have a problem with this. Motion, maybe to defer properly because we don't have all the information. Again, that's what the board should do to their clarity. I mean, Daniel's done his due diligence, he started the process. I just don't want them to be hindered from conducting their services while this process is.
Tom, you may not, what assurances do we have that we're not under police of this thing?
I can tell you, nobody from the building inspector's office is going, that is under my supervision, is going to be out there shutting their church service down in this, that's going on as I understand it, in the stable building. And we're not going to likely be out there looking around to see if they're in the classroom. However, by the letter of the law, it sounds as though, from what Dan informed us of yesterday, that particularly that outbuilding has to be submitted to the state fire marshal's office for approval before they can use it.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
I do have one question, just to further reinforce what I said, do you anticipate Wema being out there doing any enforcement activities?
Okay.
In the interim, if we do defer.
No, it's strictly going to the state fire marshal's office there.
Okay.
If we were to defer this, I can still make.
That's, I'm doing everything I can to tell you, we're not going to be out there stopping.
We're not going to shut down the church.
Okay.
That ain't good business.
You can ask that question at the mic if you would like. I will answer what I think he asked, could they complete the work that they're currently undertaking, I guess, on the building?
And where do we go from here? I mean, how do we go?
I would say any.
The state fire marshal to do all this process.
I would say that you, we're not going to be out there stopping you from completing any work, but it's at your own risk. So if the state fire marshal comes in and says it's wrong, you may have to go back and do it over.
So are we talking like the legal inspectors or the state fire marshal?
Yeah, I can't, that's all with the state, so it's between you and the state.
Maybe sprinklers or something, too, I don't know. Maybe they're tough to do.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions? I want to keep getting you up and down. Well, apparently it's already been sent to the fire marshal's office through Wema, say Mr. Cowan, and you will receive, or they have told you to get their architect or engineer or whoever to forward it to. Is that an answer?
Yeah, because it's new, we submitted it in to do due diligence, to find out the process, and we were told that the engineer architect has to submit it into a portal. The engineer architect can submit it in as a no review, they can actually send it in and review, requesting the no review, it has to be sent in through the state, they recommended that it be sent in.
Did you, did zoning committee yesterday?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Again, we found out about this about 3:30 yesterday.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it. Okay, do we have a motion?
I made the motion that whatever we have to do to keep the church going. Is that deferred or? There's no limit, so we'll have to know how long it will take.
I understand, I understand. I'll probably have to defer that to Mr. Jennings.
The church is open, forget it. And we have no plans. Tom will have to be the man to direct me to file something, he said he's not going to do it. If he sends it to me, I'm not going to do it, or we wait for this to happen. So when and if and how many times the church meets is up to them. And they have testified in another, before another board that they only meet an hour a week, so.
Mr. Johnny, that answer your question, does that give you any guidance on what you're looking for here, sir?
Worded the way it needs to be, word, keep the church open.
So we're just voting to approve in the bill, but we're not setting the standard, that's state fire marshal's. So I think that's what's before us, to approve what's.
It's not.
What's before you, whether or not you can defer. That's the only issue.
Well, you can make a motion to approve it. I would suggest that if you make a motion to approve it, you make a motion to approve the outbuilding that's been submitted to you in the site plan form with the provision that they must comply with any state fire marshal criteria.
Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Johnny?
Can I put that, would you put Tom's word in the motion?
You can vote, you can do that, you can vote to deny it, or you can defer it at Wema's request.
Well, I think Mr. Ricketts' motion will be to approve it subject to the church eventually complying with state fire marshal criteria set for it.
Correct.
We have that motion, we have a second.
Is that work, Mike?
You what?
Does that work?
Well, the only thing just sitting here thinking was the fire marshal comes back and says they can't.
That'd be the state fire marshal's.
Be on me, man.
Be on what?
The state fire marshal.
I don't know.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Mr. Cal, thank you.
What understanding?
One distinction, Mr. Rempro.
In the same.
State fire marshal review. If you want to continue working to get your bids, I would be talking to him and the state fire marshal.
Okay, we're now ready for the site plan, the Casa 2791 monument sign.
The site, the site plan, this is map 99, parcel 77.01, this is for an entrance sign to the Casa 2791 residential rental development. The site plan meets planning requirements, they agree to label utility district's comments as they address concerns of a water line in the vicinity of the sign location and within agreement to work with label, utility district staff can recommend approval.
Do we have anyone here today we should speak on this case?
Yes, sir. Kyle Griffin, CSTG. This is just a site plan monument with a little bit of landscaping around for the Casa 2791 development, just up here to answer any questions you may have about it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here today we should speak on this case? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
No.
A motion to approve by Mr. Rempro, a second by Mr. Thompson to approve subject to staff recommendations, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
The next item we have on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, is eleven and EnviroCast addition consisting of one lot, oh, excuse me, that was withdrawn by the African. That EnviroCast addition, case three, was withdrawn by the African. The next item is the site plan of Maria Church of Christ. They're doing an accessory building that I understand is to be used by their youth for different activities, consisting of one lot at 5555 Colesberry Pike. The site plan met planning requirements. Wema again is requesting a deferral of this item to submit for a state fire marshal plan review under TCA 62-2-102. Now, this is really similar to the last case, the only difference being, you're talking to Daniel yesterday afternoon, the last case, Daniel's gut is, they, although we don't know, the state fire marshal may very well look at the scale of what's going on and find a way to work with them and say they don't require a full-scale conference or review. At the scale of this one, what's the total building size? 4,000 square feet. Daniel feels pretty confident that state fire marshals won't, are going to want to come in on this one and see plans.
Okay, we have anyone here we should speak on this case today? Mr. Dean?
Did I state that correctly? Okay. Please, I'm here to represent the project. We're here to turn to you guys for a site plan review, to review the planning particulars, as Tom says, we comply with, the use, which obviously we comply with. As a part of the backend process, you guys make an approval on the site plan and it goes through engineering review, Tom's department signs off on it and a building permit is issued. There's a process to do all the backend review that's in place, which would include Wema's review and their sign-off on the building permit. So I would just respectfully ask for your approval here, not a deferral, so that we can proceed through this step. There's no need, in my opinion, for us to defer now, wait through a long process with the state fire marshal and then come back to you and waste more of your time. Obviously, if the state fire marshal doesn't approve it, we'll never get a building permit. If Wema's not happy, we'll never get a building permit. So I would just ask for your approval of the site plan at this stage. Obviously, we understand we're going to have to satisfy engineering, we're going to have to satisfy Tom's department, we're going to have to satisfy Captain Cowan just to get our building permit. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else we should speak on this case today? Mr. Cowan, is it a fair statement to say that y'all won't be signing any plaits that don't have all of your, the approvals y'all are looking for in advance? Is that an accurate statement?
It is, because we'd like it to go to the state fire marshal's.
I understand.
Because of the square footage, this happened in another county with another venue and the state fire marshal come in and made a plan.
Said by embedded process regardless is going to be delayed anyway to get that far.
Someone actually reported a wedding venue in another county and the state fire marshal's office come in on them. They actually filed a complaint, so.
To Cav County.
Happened in Cav County, the wedding venue.
Okay, so, but it's accurate, so you're not going to sign any plaits until y'all have all approvals that you're looking for.
We just want to make sure everything's correct and to the letter, because I mean, we don't want to.
I have a question for Mr. Dean. Would you be comfortable with a similar approval to what we gave the last case, church case, where they approved it subject to state fire marshal review?
I mean, absolutely. I think to me that goes without saying. It's like saying, put the condition on every site plan approval that it's subject to engineering review and subject to planning review and subject to building.
I don't want it to be misconstrued that we are discounting Wema's question. It's certainly important, part of the reason that we have the current building codes nationwide that we have and that we have chosen to adopt locally and fire codes is specifically rooted in the, as I understand it, in part at least, to what happened at the Caress compound in Texas, that they had a large assemblage of people there regardless of what anybody might think of what they were doing in there or whatever, and they were holding religious services. And of course, we all know what happened, there was a siege of the compound by federal government authorities and they shot a tear gas bomb or something in there, well, it went up like a matchstick and, because they were in a large barn. And that's why the state fire marshal's office is particularly sensitive to these assemblies.
As well it should.
As well they should be.
And we respect their work and office.
Right, we're not, we're not discounting that, we're not discounting anybody's freedom of worship or ability of religious practice either, but there is a health safety component to it. I don't think there's anything wrong with recommending frugal subject to state fire marshal approval, because we're not going to stamp off on the permit until we get it anyway.
That would be.
Yeah, I'd also like to go on record, we're not at all trying to rebut in any way what Captain Cowan's asking us to do. We just don't want to waste any more of your time, come here twice or something.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from our board?
I'm just glad they're coming, I'm glad that people like Daniel were doing this and keep that tone of integrity.
Thank you, Daniel. I appreciate that Wema's standing up, coming in and having us.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions from our board or comments?
Chairman Allen, I'd like to offer approval based on Wema's findings as we stated before, so the same way.
Okay, well, is that a motion to approve?
Yes, sir, motion.
Subject to. I think we have a motion to approve subject to state fire marshal review and compliance with Wema's recommendations. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. Ricketts. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? The motion will carry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Who was the second?
Mr. Ricketts. Ready for the sketch plan for Berkshire Ridge?
The next item on the agenda is a sketch plat for Berkshire Ridge consisting of 87 lots at the back of the Berkshire Ridge subdivision on Posey Hill Road with technical corrections, staff can recommend approval. You've seen this one before, this is more or less a renewal, if I'm not mistaken, is it not, Christopher?
Well, it's more or less a renewal.
Yeah, they've got some revisions to the road alignment.
Okay, okay. Do we have anyone here today we should speak on this case?
Since this is the first large one that's come up, I will point out, because they submitted prior to the zone change, they are entitled for a time period to the previous zoning entitlements. 25,000 square foot lot density in this case.
Good morning, Kyle Griffin, CSTG. This, as Tom mentioned, this was approved previously. There was a preliminary plat approved back in 2007, I think that has subsequently expired. This plan that you see before you, actually, the pre-plat that you've seen before had lots on nearly the entire acreage of the development. What you see before you today conserves right around 60% of the land mass that is remaining on the property, while still achieving the same density that was approved previously. With that, we're trying to create more of a park-like development on this site, so we appreciate your consideration and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you do have. Also, I will add one more thing, we believe the original pre-plat kind of stalled out because there were no soils available, and we have soils on the Ricketts site to the south that we will be applying towards this development. Thank you.
Can you, is there still just one way in and one way out here, Tom?
Yes. They're stubbing out to several properties, but they do not have frontage on.
Any other roadway?
Any, Posey Hill will be the closest one and I don't think they have frontage there yet.
Okay.
But this is, I believe this is a back half of the existing subdivision that, at Berkshire.
It would be the back half, sorry. I don't know if it was, it was never approved as a master plan or anything, but I think it's.
I believe it was, it was initially portioned, three and four of the original preliminary, but that's expired. That being said, with him being here today, seeking this approval, he's effectively fallen in under the previous zoning entitlements.
So our rules, as it states, the number of lots and secondary entrances do not come into play in existing subdivisions? Even if they're not part of the original?
According to state vesting periods, that's correct. There's a certain period of time that he has to move from this sketch plat to a final plat approval, but as long as he does that under those time criterion and submits them under those time criterion, then he's permitted to fly into the previous zoning entitlements.
And that's the case here, correct?
Correct.
To your question on existing developments, if this case were before you next month, it would have to abide by current regulations even though it's part of a larger development?
Due to the timeframe.
Due to the timeframe of the previous approval, which had expired, even under state vesting law.
Well, that, originally, it was approved.
As phase is three and four of Berkshire Ridge.
So it's already been through this process years ago.
Years ago.
And then it expired. It's the only reason they're back is because they expired, but there's also an issue working stuff out of Label, water on that particular property.
It actually was, Mr. Griffin, I'll let him. But I think the other, the other development to the south, to Berkshire Ridge, solved that problem for them.
Yeah, we still have to work out some details with Playville, but the intent with the Ricketts property to the south, and we ran the trunk line from Posey Hill Road to the west, we studied this as part of that, and we believe that there is capacity in that line to service this new development. They'll also have to run their numbers and validate that. It was on the horizon when we did that initial.
So the folks who've done the Ricketts property are doing this property more than my experience. So, that's all. I'm sorry, I don't think I'm supposed to ask that. It's okay. All right, do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, I said, second motion.
We have a motion to approve from Ms. Weathers, to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. Noakes, all those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed? Motion carries. We have the final for Casa 2710, phase two, that's mine, do you approve?
With technical corrections and compliance with label utility district comments, staff can recommend approval.
You're up, Mr.? Kyle Griffin, CSTG. This is just the first final plat of the Casa 2710 project, this is right across the street on South Mount Juliette Road from the Casa 2792 project, which had the, the entry monument at it today. There is a final plat for phase one and for phase two at the same time, we understand that those will be recorded in sequence, so phase one will come first, phase two will come second. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Weathers, a second by Mr. Renfro, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? Final for phase two of Casa 2710.
This is on South Mount Juliette Road again, map 99, parcels 89 and 90.01, with technical corrections, staff can recommend approval, and, and label utility district comments, compliance.
You want to echo the same comments you just made, Mr. Griffin? Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have a motion? Motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations, all those in favor, I'm sorry, do we have a second? A second from Mr. Ricketts, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And final for the Amber Falls subdivision on Murford Road, apparently being deferred until September?
The applicant is requesting deferral until September 22, 2023 for the final plat, requesting more time to prepare construction documents and, and other plans associated with what they need to do.
Having its initial approval, grandfather's in the, the original...
It having its preliminary approval a couple of months ago by the state vesting rights, if you have a sketch or preliminary development plan in place, you have a certain period of time, breach, final plat approval. Now, it's incumbent on any of these that have these previous use entitlements or zoning entitlements to keep progressing, because if they allow those times to lapse, they then fall under whatever the current zoning model is.
How much time before they come and establish?
It's, the, that's, that's a loaded question, because if you read the State Vesting Rights Act, it's, it's very arduous to navigate your way, but at a minimum, they've got three years to get from sketch or preliminary to final plat approval, and they could have as much as five years, and once they get started in processing a development, they get two years added for each separate phase, up to 15 years.
So as long as they're continuing to do what they want, then that time can be extended?
Yes. Up to 15 years, after 15 years, all bets are off, by then.
That was in that document you posted.
Maybe some different people.
Okay, Amber Falls, they requested deferral, I would make that motion to defer to the September 22 meeting.
I'll second it.
Mr. Renfro seconded it, all of the favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. We're now ready for affirmation plaits, Tom?
We have a subdivision of the Frank J. Hoffman property, lot two, consisting of one lot on 5878 Franklin Road, references map 94, parcel 30.04, and we have subdivision of Elizabeth, of the Elizabeth Van Trees in consolidation of the Charles Van Trees property on Double Log Cabin Road, consisting of, I think we neglected to put the map number, but it's parcel seven and 7.06. We, we will correct that in the minutes to include the map number.
How many lots is that, Tom?
I believe it's consolidated two into one.
Oh, it's consolidation plan, okay.
Yes.
Anything else, sir?
That, that's all that I have there.
Okay, that's fine. We have two plaits to vote on for affirmation. Anyone want to make a motion? We have a motion to approve, and a second from Mr. Thompson, all of the favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Thank you, I'm sorry.
I will say, timing is everything, and we did choose as a county to adopt different standards in our residential zone districts, and we tried our best to make sure that it had the least amount of impact on people in transit in the middle of development and everything. Having said that, you can anticipate, I think, that you may have at least a couple of developments that may have gotten caught by this with regard to expiries, and even using the more generous state vesting rights, they, they may have, they may have an expiry in terms of time, so they're going to follow the current zoning standards and all likelihood, I just want you to be aware of that, should they come forward at some point.
If that comes before us, we, we have anything to do, anything?
No, I, I, I need to talk to Mike about it, as, as the planner, I guess, but, I mean, if Mike wants to weigh in on it, he can, that's, that's fine.
So the two affirmations then following the new legislation, new laws, these two?
Yes, yes, they were all done, they were all submitted and in process prior to the changes, and so...
So they're on relevant ends, what you're saying?
Yes, yes, and effectively, we, at the county commission, did ask them to make that, whatever amendment they passed ultimately, we asked them to make it effective beginning tomorrow, so that it did not affect current settlements.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Anyone else have anything else? Okay, we will stay on the journey.